Okay. I know Rob was here last time, and I spoke a little bit about this already. And I kind of went through it at the time before, but let's just go over it really briefly. It's essentially the same thing that you did last year.
Right.
So what we're going to do is put 5% CPI on the levy prior to last year's abatement. Then you're going to abate for the 2021 Property Tax Relief Grant. Then you're going to abate for the 2022 Property Relief Grant. And we are going to abate the recapture revenue. And where that will end up at the long run, once we get all the additional EBF monies in, you will end up with about a 4.5% decrease on your total extension for property taxes, but you're going to end up with, in total, a million dollars more in revenue because of the Property Tax Relief Grant. Okay? And that's really kind of the bottom line where you end up. So you're gonna, it looks like you're levying way more than you are because of those three abatements. Okay? Questions? Concerns? Are we good? Yes. Okay, you can close the hearing? Well, if we have any questions?
So many, so many questions, yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the truth and taxation hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Blackman? Please, Trump?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda, let's see, two, three, audience comments? Are there any, there are no audience comments? Just making sure.
Yeah.
Are we going to executive session?
If there are questions about any of the student discipline.
Are there any questions regarding that?
Okay.
We will not go into executive session. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Well, greetings, everyone. Unfortunately, we're having a few streaming issues, so there's nobody at home, but for all of you who are in person, I certainly appreciate you being here. Hopefully, you all had a nice weekend, and we're looking forward to the last two weeks of school before winter break. Month of December is filled with games, concerts, performances, and this week is certainly no different. I was lucky enough to catch part of the eighth grade boys' basketball game at Parker this afternoon, and they won. Awesome environment, the cheerleaders were fantastic, we had the Falcons soaring, and the crowd was excited. It was a lot of fun, absolutely a lot of fun. So hopefully, some community members and more students can get out to experience that. But it was just wonderful to hear everyone so excited and cheering on our students, not only them cheering for each other, but a lot of good sportsmanship, sportsmanship all around. Unfortunately, our seventh grade boys didn't fare as well, but I'm sure they'll keep working and improving. This, it's a very busy week, as I mentioned. The schedule for this week is as follows: We have the Heather Hill Kindergarten Concert tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. The Beginning Band Concert is Wednesday at 6:30, and that's at Parker. And then the Parker Choir Concert is on Thursday at 6:30 p.m., and that's at Parker as well. Next week is very similar, Heather Hill Choir Concert on Monday, the 19th, at 6:30. The Parker Orchestra Concert is on Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. And then the Flossmore Hills K2 Choir Concerts on Wednesday, December 21st, at 6:00 p.m. So all of those activities will bring us to the end of the second quarter and the last day of school in 2022, on Thursday, December 22nd. There is no school on Friday, December 23rd, and we do return on Monday, January 9th. It's always a good opportunity to thank our activity sponsors, coaches, athletic directors. So much goes into organizing all the activities for our students. I don't know that we can thank them enough, and we'll have another round of thanks as we launch our elementary extracurricular program in January. As I mentioned, we'll have about 450 students, plus or minus, participating in that. It's a huge, huge number. It's going to be a great opportunity for kids, and so we'll be sure to bring that back and that experience to the board as well. That's item I report.
Thank you. I'm having a little technology issue.
May I swill?
Yes, we, our board docs is down.
Oh, okay.
I can't get into, yeah, okay. So, let's see where we are.
I think it's the internet.
I think it's.
Because my internet is not.
Do you have connectivity, Darryl?
Oh, I do too.
Yeah, I think it's.
The website is down.
I think, yeah, the board docs website is down.
I did see that this is.
Oh, wait, now it's.
But it should just be a web client. But I'm only getting the ticking box.
I'm gonna do, yeah, okay. I think the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including personal report 23-009 and payroll for the month of November?
Second.
Roll call?
Blackman?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, and the motion passes? Okay. Next item on the agenda are the bills for the month of December.
I do need an agenda, so I can read the amount. Okay, I had the pleasure of reviewing the bills for the month of December, and I would like to move to approve the bills for the month of December in the amount of $1,171,754.48.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Rouse?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to adopt a property tax levy for the levy year 2022 under the CPI cap of 5% in accordance with the laws under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, PTO?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to apply for the Property Tax Relief Grant Funds generating an abatement of $2,283,342 for our property taxpayers?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Rouse?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the resolution providing for abatement of 2022 levy adjustment?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve revised, the revised policy 6606135 and 6290 as presented?
So moved.
Any questions?
Second.
Hey, roll call?
Rouse?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Are we on F now? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion abeyance agreement for student 2023D-8?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Rouse?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion abeyance agreement for student 2023D-9?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Blackman?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, and the motion passes? But it's 10, right? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion abeyance agreement for student 2023D10?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Trump?
Yes.
Please, Trump?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, the motion passes. Okay, that's the end of the action items. Next item on the agenda are the discussion items, and the first one is the 2023-24 Staffing Plan.
Yes, I do have the, Courtney, you may want to try it, it may be up. If not, I can cast.
Mine's working, it's slow.
Yeah, it just takes a minute.
You're able to get into board docs?
It's just really slow.
Yeah, I'm a little, just 30 seconds.
I can get on my phone, I can't get it on the website.
Oh, right, mhm.
With the update, it was advised that you clear your cache.
Oh, okay.
And I did do that, and I feel like it didn't make it worse.
Well, Courtney's pulling up, actually, you can pull it up through the Google, or Google. While Courtney's pulling up the report and the spreadsheet, just a couple of things, just to add a little bit of context, these are projected FTE numbers, and where FTE is full-time equivalent, a classroom teacher is 1.0 FTE. For class sizes, we do target, we try to target 20 in kindergarten, 22 for grades 1 through 3, and then 25 students in grades 4 and 5. Those aren't hard rules, we do go above them, but we certainly keep them in mind as we're doing the staffing. One thing to consider as we get through this, and we can talk about this a little bit more at Heather Hill, what we're finding, we may even want to come back on our fifth grade numbers there, because as we're pushing to get to just a better level of inclusion, some of our specials numbers and classroom numbers are going higher, depending on the makeup of those instructional classrooms. For the most part, the class sizes are really, really strong, but that fifth grade number is keeping us just on our toes a little bit. So what we may want to do is add one more FTE, keep it on the side in case we don't need it, and come back later, but so we can kind of just go through. All of the schools are currently flat, except Western Avenue. Hey, Kim. You can see, we rolled down the class size numbers, what you see in grades 1 through 5 are actuals, and then the kindergarten numbers are the four-year cohort averages. So Flossmore Hills, strong numbers, I think we like what we're seeing there typically in fifth grade at Flossmore Hills, we are somewhere around 27, 28, the way that it's at least worked the last four years. So I know this will be a nice change for them as they're moving through. But again, Flossmore Hills, staffing is flat, just shifting around, one teacher from third to fifth. Heather Hill, again, moving one teacher from fifth to fourth, but we're going to need to watch that average class size, again, it's at 26 currently. As we get through the rest of the year with our annual reviews and other discussions about students in our instructional classroom, depending on where those numbers fall, we may need to add a section at fifth grade at Heather Hill, so that we can include all of the students without driving our special classes numbers too high, but also, as we're including them into the regular classroom as well, some of those numbers can reach 30, 31, that's just a really high number. So we'll keep an eye on that.
Do we have a hard cap?
We don't. We've not hit. We, if we've hit 30, it's been fleeting, but typically, we do close sections and then we'll overflow. Every time we overflow, we give those families first opportunity to come back. Depending on the year, it can be 50% who want to stay where, you have two choices, you can stay where you're at, where you started, or you can go back to your home school. Usually, it's around 50/50, I'm not sure where we'll end up this year. But, but for this exercise, we put all those students back, assuming that they'll want to go back, unless we hear differently.
So I'm looking at just difference in numbers of students across the board in that fifth grade level.
Yes.
Is that number right, that number of students, is that's your projected? Or no, that's actual right now?
The number of fifth grade students represented here are the current fourth graders.
Got, okay.
And then kindergarten is a four-year average.
So the rationale to move to a third, from a second to a third, adding one more, is that like, once you hit that 60 number for each, or so 30 is that number for one class?
Oh, definitely, definitely, because we try to keep it around 25.
Okay.
And we always have additional registrations. Typically, if a class starts at 27, there's a great chance we're either going to overflow immediately or end up having to add a section.
I remember asking in the past, the rationale behind, you know, obviously, older students can stay on task independently more often, or are, you know, pulled out for services or things of that nature, so it's more a beautiful thing that they, you know, the class sizes can grow a little bit. Are we still seeing, and it's probably respective to each class, but do we see more pull-out minutes, or are we pushing in more than we're pulling students out? Or is it just, I mean?
Do you mean at Heather Hill specifically, or just in general?
Just in general.
I would say that it varies, I mean, we can ask the principals specifically about it, but I think it depends on the student, their level of need. I would say, in any given classroom, students are coming and going, especially when we consider win time, the intervention periods, all those different things. So principals, do you have anything else to add?
I guess for some context, I'm just wondering if maybe, oh, well, this year we're, or next year, we're going to try to push in more, so we're going to have the kids in the classroom, so maybe we want that classroom number to be a little bit lower? Or this year, we've, you know, we're pulling out, so now we can, we have a little bit more flexibility, so that's where my mindset's going.
I think the more we look at it, more so when you look at Heather Hill, it'd be an instructional program versus in our schools with our kiddos who have resource, because in coming, our learners who have resource minutes, like at Christmas, they typically pull out during that midtime where everybody's moving, and then in our set, small group times.
Okay.
But for that core instruction, they're in there the entire time, and so they're coming in those numbers. The instructional program's different, which is only at Heather Hill.
Okay.
But you know, Christina, what we do see, oh, sorry, just one moment, as students, as general education, students change grade levels, level up, level down, that's where we could see a little bit of tightness just on these classroom numbers. They're not special education, but they may need additional, you know, enrichment math, and so the fourth grader may go up to fifth grade.
Sure.
That's where we can get a little bit tricky on those class sizes.
And then that's what we saw in Western, we have a fifth grade class at 31, because three kids level up for A.L.
Okay.
I guess I have a question to add on for Chris there, from what she was sharing. So I'm curious about the FTE, so with, with the programming that makes sense, I'm wondering about co-teacher, like, being accounted for, so like, as those numbers get larger, is there a need, or is this not account for that, for the additional support for the mainstream classroom that might add, not a parapro, but a co-teacher in there?
We have not added any, we do not have a model at the elementary for specialized co-teaching.
Gotcha. So that would be why that wouldn't be accounted in there?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. Now, I think there's that conversation to be had, especially as, you know, Jackie is generating more students for inclusion and preparing those teachers, I think that's absolutely where we'll have to get. We have that happening at Parker, I should talk about the microphone. We have it happening at Parker more effectively, by the nature of the schedule, but not the elementaries.
Got it. If we do do it, so Jackie, if you start looking at it, would that be for this upcoming year, or is that still on the horizon?
It would still be on the horizon.
Okay. And then this, on the middle school, on the junior high, is that accounting for then the projected FTE, including co-taught teachers?
Yes.
So that is included in there?
Yeah.
No, this is not, this is just classroom teachers, right?
Correct.
Okay, never mind. I digress.
Yes, an additional conversation for all the supplemental pieces.
Well, and I was just thinking of those supplemental people and these numbers, so.
Just a quick question, no, on the numbers, is it usually this way, as far as like, the enrollment numbers? I just noticed, like, some of the schools are on the lower end, and then like, Western is like significantly higher, is that pretty standard?
Yeah, that's pretty typical. I would say, going all, at least in my experience, all the way back through the beginning of 2017, it's usually Heather Hill, who's lowest, and then Serena and Flossmore Hills, Western Avenue, then Parker. I think what we'll see, using our enrollment projections, Parker should land around 800 kids next year, because they're graduating 300 and, I think, 10 eighth graders, but for the most part, we're replacing with 250 to 275 students at the upcoming grade levels.
The sixth grade, yeah.
Yeah, and so I imagine there'll still be somewhere around, you know, like I said, 775, 800.
And they don't have instructional or pre-K in here, or E.C.
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
The programs make your numbers a little higher.
Got it, okay.
Thanks, Haley, that's a good point. And then, you know, we do have Title I comparability, so if you scroll down just a little bit, the class sizes at Western Avenue are nominally smaller, larger, not smaller, than the rest of the buildings.
Why were they larger again?
Title I comparability, it's our only non-title building.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But 453, I think we've seen it as high as probably 475. I do know in the past passed, and Fran and Amabel may be able to weigh in this, I think it's been over 500.
500, we found over that.
Which, Western is packed currently, I don't know, at that point, you're taking all supplemental classrooms and all those different pieces. Any other questions on staffing? Great.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, the next item, next discussion item is the 2023-24 calendar.
It just takes a second.
Yeah, mine won't work at all. Internet issues.
It's not just me?
Mm-mm.
No.
It's all of us. It's not you.
It's the website.
It's us, for real.
It's the website.
Yeah.
Okay, so a couple of things to consider, I'm actually going to pull up the report, just give me one moment.
Oh, now it gave me an error.
Okay. So this is the draft school calendar. This is our initial conversation, had a meeting with Dr. McAllister and Dr. Wakeley from District 153 and District 233 respectively, to talk about where they were heading with the calendar. I know we wanted to generate a little bit more consistency than we had this year in a couple of areas. So this is just that initial discussion. We'll take your feedback from today. We have a meeting with the FEA next week. The two Scots and I will follow up after that to see if there's any other trading to be done, and then we'll bring this back to the board in January. But generally speaking, we will begin on August 16th for staff members, students will begin on August 21st, that is later, that is later than we've done in the past, but the high school is adamant. And just for the sake of our parents, since we didn't necessarily have a good objection, we want to make sure that we're playing nicely in the sandbox, to keep it as aligned as possible. That would bring the last day of school to May 31st, 2024. Spring break, or winter break would officially begin on Monday, the 25th, we would go through that Friday, the 22nd, and then begin on January 8th, and then spring break is actually March 25th through March 29th. I believe the difference here that you will see between this and the high school, I believe the high school is looking to take Easter Monday off. I have no problem with that, we just have to know that that's going to push us into the following week, and everyone will have to come back on a Monday.
Can you scroll up to see, I want to see, no, yep, right there, stop. Sorry, I don't have it here.
Why is the high school looking to take Easter Monday off? Are they short, yeah, are they?
They like it. That's it.
Are they adding a different day?
No, they're going, they're going into June.
Maybe they're selling, celebrating the European holiday of Husky Day.
June 3rd?
The feeders expressed the concern about going later and later, but the high school's solid in their perspective. So that would be the difference. Otherwise, it's almost identical to today. We've not added any half-days to this, so there's two, really, two things that we would like to talk about. The first one being, is there interest in Easter Monday and going to that following Monday in June? What is that officiating? It'd be the 3rd, we would have to come back for one day. That would be the first one. And then the other one, at the district leadership team, we did talk about the possible addition of some half-days. My gut says we may want to hold off on that, because we do want to talk to the community a little bit more. If you remember, we pulled them out because it was, is very impactful on our parents, and just trying to account for childcare and all those different pieces, so that's why we do only have two of them. We have two half-school improvement days, one is on October 31st, and then the second one is in typically, where is it?
Yep, March.
Yep, there, March 1st.
Casimir.
So, we have two half-days currently. We can talk about how we use our current time to get to the articulation piece, but I would probably hold off on the half-days until we really hear from our parents that that's not a problem, they could, you know, figure out how to make the childcare work, I'm just very sensitive to the feedback that we got in 2018 before we make that change.
I was more so, this calendar looks fine to me, I'm not opposed to adding or taking away or anything like that. I remember us having a conversation, though, about start times. It was probably, what, two, three, probably three years ago?
Probably, mhm.
And all of the research based on, you know, the junior high starting later.
Yes, the junior high should start at 9 o'clock. We can't because of every after-school activity that exists.
That's right, that's what it was, okay. I just.
Yeah, there's just no way to make the transportation work, and also, we would be the only one in our area where I, frankly, where I have seen this work, is where you have large feeders with multiple schools internally who end up playing each other and all those things. Lincolnshire is one that I'm thinking of, made the switch wholesale in their, in their community, and they were able to make it work, but it tipped over a number of dominos for their surrounding areas. Again, I think it's something to look at, it just hasn't caught a lot of speed yet.
So this year, we had winter break start on the 23rd, right? There's no institute?
Correct.
And over here, we have the 25th being Christmas. Do you suspect that, like, so obviously, they're so close, and historically, if we think about just other districts, the 23rd is sort of a key date to leave, or take a day off, or because of the travel?
Oh, well, it's, 23rd is Saturday.
Is it? 20, so 24?
Because I believe Chris.
So 22nd, so we should be fine.
Oh, it's a Sunday? Oh, I thought it was a Monday.
Am I?
23 is Saturday, 22 is Friday.
So 22 would be then, okay.
Correct, 22 would be the last day.
25, okay, but historically, we haven't had any issues with, like, the Friday before a holiday break? This one's a particular one for?
When was the last time? I'm trying to remember the last time the calendar lined up this way, I don't remember anything, anything glaring, but I'm sure it happens, yes.
Yeah, because like, this calendar, it's set up that Friday's off.
Correct.
And then Christmas Eve obviously falls on that Sat, on the weekend.
I think it's because Christmas Eve fell on that Saturday, or it falls on a Saturday, so I think that's why you decided to do Friday off, so people had the day before Christmas Eve off, so.
I don't remember always coming back on Monday, or is that HF? Somebody doesn't come back on Monday.
I don't think so.
We have come back to a institute day, and then students have started on Tuesday.
Right.
That was back when we were doing Wellness Day.
Oh.
Typically.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But all of this aligns with 153 and 233, except that Monday.
Except Easter Monday. This aligns perfectly.